Meeting in order, Mrs. Altiel, would you please take a row?
Greg Solings.
Here.
Christine Lando.
Here.
Karen Zager.
Here.
Ms. Flores.
Here.
Michael Bresch.
Here.
Robert Corwin.
Here.
Juan Hernández.
Here.
Kimberly Alda.
Here.
Richard Waring.
Alex Marata.
And Yvonne Young.
Here.
We are tomorrow.
Thank you. Good evening. As Chairman of the Hartford Board of Education, I hereby call this meeting to order May 16th, 2017. A regular meeting. I wish to extend a warmest welcome to everyone present, to our television viewers, the Board, the Superintendent, and I are pleased that you are here to join us to celebrate achievement, review information, and make policy decisions that are relevant, excuse me, relative to the effective operation of Hartford Public Schools. This is a regular meeting. All items will be discussed or voted on this evening and have been posted as required by law. The Hartford Board of Education, we are here to set goals, listen to reports from the Superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. We are not here to manage decisions or solve problems of individuals. Management is the responsibility of the Superintendent. The monthly meetings of the Board are open to the public. They are the time where the Board conducts its business of governing the school system in the public arena. The regular meetings are not meetings with the public. Therefore, comments from the audience will be confined to the time designated for the public, for the public to address the Board. The quorum and courtesy are important elements in effective meeting, excuse me, effective meetings. Public, please silence your cell phones or communication devices and refrain from talking while others are speaking. Since it is legally mandated that these proceedings are accurately recorded, I may ask for order periodically should noise begin to interfere with our recording capabilities. I am pleased that you are here, have taken the time to join us this evening, and we are very proud of the school system, and I thank you for the interest in the Hartford Public Schools. Now, Mr. Flores, would you read this in Spanish, please? Or translate?
Buenas noches. El presidente de la Junta de Educación de Hartford ha llamado a orden esta reunión ordinaria de la junta del 16 de mayo 2017. Damos una calidad bienvenida a todas las personas presentes y a nuestros televidentes. La junta y las superintendentes se complacen que se han unido a nosotros para celebrar logros, revisar información y tomar decisiones relacionadas con el funcionamiento efectivo de las escuelas públicas de Hartford. Esta es una reunión ordinaria, y todos los asuntos que serán discutidos o votados en esta tarde han sido notificados como lo requiere la ley estatal. Como Junta de Educación de Hartford estamos aquí para establecer metas, escuchar los informes de la Superintendente, aprobar los presupuestos, contratos, y nombramientos de personal, y establecer normas para el distrito. No estamos aquí para tomar decisiones administrativas o resolver problemas individuales. La administración es la responsabilidad de la Superintendente. Las reuniones mensuales de la junta están abiertas al público. Son el momento en que la junta lleva a cabo su tarea de gobernar el sistema escolar en un espacio público. Las reuniones regulares no son reuniones con el público. Por lo tanto, los comentarios de la audiencia se limitarán al tiempo designado para el público dirigirse a la junta. El decoro y la acortecía son elementos importantes en las reuniones públicas eficaces. Por favor, silencie sus teléfonos celulares o dispositivos de comunicación y abstengase de hablar mientras otros están hablando. Ya que es mandato legal de que los procedimientos sean grabados con precisión, es posible que tengamos que pedir orden periódicamente si el ruido interfiere con nuestras capacidades de grabación. Nos complace que se haya tomado el tiempo esta tarde para unirse a nosotros. Estamos muy orgullosos de este sistema escolar y le damos gracias por su interés en las escuelas públicas de Hartford. Si alguien necesita traducción al español, la señora Marta Bentez de algún centro puede ayudarles.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Flores. In keeping with our monthly recognitions, tonight we are honoring the class of 2017 Fox Scholars. And I ask, Mr. Cotto, would you please read the background?
Yeah, sure, thank you. A little bit of background about the class of 2017 Fox Scholars. Actually, this is about the Fox Scholars. The Jacob L. and Louis Fox Foundation was founded in 1936 by Louis Fox, a graduate of Hartford Public High School and a local attorney, as a memorial to his father, Jacob L. Fox. The foundation has awarded college scholarships to graduating seniors of the Hartford Public Schools since 1937. Although Louis Fox died suddenly in 1976, the legacy of his devotion to the youth of Hartford continue to support their educational efforts. This year's 12 scholars were chosen on the basis of scholastic achievement, financial need, outstanding character, demonstrated leadership, and a spirit of reverence. The 2017 scholars personify the quest for excellence advocated by Louis Fox throughout his lifetime. So we congratulate these promising young men and women who will continue the proud record of achievement and service inspired by Louis Fox. And I believe we have some certificates here, right?
Yes. So, Ms. Oliver, can you please begin with your name? And I'm not sure if the students are here or not, but I know it's traffic, so just bear with us. But, Ms. Oliver?
Hi, thank you, Chair. First of all, as a Fox Scholar myself, a class of 1992, I'm very proud to start off this recognition for 2017. It is a great opportunity for our young people, and I look forward to this tradition continuing here in the city of Hartford. So, we want to first recognize Nadia Abdul-Wal Munen from Hartford Public High Academy of Nursing and Health Sciences.
Up next, I don't know if this is, okay, sorry. Up next, we have Erna Ali from Sport and Medical Sciences Academy, and I do believe she's here, so congratulations.
Yeah, so you gotta get that picture again.
I'm honored to present Eric Bueno from Hartford Public High School Academy of Engineering and Green Technology with this certificate.
This is for Joanna Eckenkamp, and she is from Class of Gold magnets at the school. She's right here.
I'm pleased to congratulate Coco Fali Kakabi of Hartford Public High School's Academy of Nursing and Health Sciences.
I am honored to honor Nicholas Furlough, Pathways Academy of Technology and Design.
It's my pleasure to recognize Jadea Harris from the Great Path Academy.
All right. Giovanni Jones, who's here with us. This is number two.
I'm honored to congratulate Jeffrey Narcisse for his achievement.
Also recognizing Kristen Osario from Great Path Academy.
Shaheem Russell from Achievement First. Congratulations.
And finally Tiffany Swaby of Achievement First has also earned a certificate of achievement.
Thank you again, and congratulations to all of our student scholars. We are now going to go into our dialogue session. Ms. Taylor, would you please remind us of the new protocols?
My pleasure. So, we as a Board in collaboration with the Superintendent and District Leadership are committed to cultivating a culture of excellence at all levels of Hartford Public Schools. We thank you for taking the time to attend tonight's Board meeting. We appreciate you coming out to learn more about Hartford Public Schools and for sharing your thoughts and concerns. We have established a protocol to track and respond to concerns raised. We want you to know that we take your concerns seriously, and to that end, we have, we will have staff available for immediate follow-up if follow-up is required. After you have finished speaking, a staff member will come, will, oh, will come up to you ready to take your information down. They will follow up within 48 hours. As a reminder, you have three minutes to speak. At the two-minute mark, Ms. Santiago will ring the bell, letting you know that you have one minute left. At the second bell, please wrap up your comments. Now, Mr. Flores will read this in Spanish.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Nosotros, la Junta de Educación, en colaboración con la Superintendente y personal del distrito, estamos comprometidos a cultivar una cultura de excelencia en todos los niveles de las escuelas públicas de Hartford. Les agradecemos se haya tomado el tiempo para asistir a la reunión de la junta esta noche. Les agradecemos su participación y su deseo de aprender más sobre las escuelas públicas de Hartford, y también por compartir sus pensamientos y preocupaciones. Nosotros tomamos sus preocupaciones muy seriamente y hemos establecido un protocolo para el seguimiento y respuesta a inquietudes planteadas. Tenemos personal disponible para seguimiento inmediato para los casos que nos requieren. Una vez que usted haya terminado de hablar, un miembro del personal estará disponible para tomar su información. Esa persona investigará su caso y comunicará con usted dentro de 48 horas. Le recordamos que tiene tres minutos para hablar. Cuando han pasado dos minutos, la señorita Santiago sonaré el timbre, dejándoles saber que le queda un minuto. Al segundo sonido, por favor, termine sus comentarios.
Okay, thank you so much. Mrs. Glanville, could you please begin this session?
David Iono?
Good evening, Board members, fellow citizens and residents of Hartford. Let me congratulate the Superintendent on her new job. I hope that you stick with us, as we would like very much to have someone here for a while. I'm a, I live at 150 Warrenton Avenue. I am the Vice President of Axmee 1716 Hartford Public Library, District Vice President. I am retired from this library at this present time. I'm also the President of Veterans for Peace Chapter 42 and a member of the Hartford Veterans Commission in the city of Hartford. Four of my daughters graduated from Hartford Public High School, and they all attended Noah Webster and Quirk Middle. I have a grandson, who it is my belief, as long as he lives with me on Warrenton Avenue, that he will be going to Noah Webster and possibly Hartford Public High School. That's what I would like to see, and I, and the reason I hope that is because the lottery that you guys are presently using is a broken wheel, all right? It doesn't work like it's supposed to. I understand the feelings behind it and what it was supposed to accomplish, but the unintended consequences of Chef O'Neil have become apparent. All of our neighborhood schools are really suffering because of the lack of funding. One of the things that, that I would really like to see is you fill the positions of library media specialists in the, in the school system, because that's where your literacy comes from. And as an example, I've often, you know, used my words, and people talk about education that it should be competitive, but if it's competitive, that means someone wins and someone loses. Public education should not be about competition. It should be about collaborative resources given to everybody. Couple of years ago, a Hartford Public High School student dropped this letter in the drop box at Goodman Branch Library. His name was Bianna Rodriguez. He was a Hartford Public High School student. And this is what he said when he dropped this in there with his library card. He was a, his mom was raising him. His father was in New York City. Because no one would tell me what professional dominatrix is. Dear Dave, you may not be my biological father. You may not buy me stuff here and there. You may not pay child support for me, not that you need to. Heck, where am I going with this? Oh, yeah, but you do try to keep me out of trouble. Remind me of the law, recommend stuff to me, and possibly most, most, most grateful thing answering my questions. How the heck was I supposed to know what a professional dominatrix was or that a knife had to be four inches? If there was a job where you could legally kill someone, that a sawed-off shotgun was illegal, that alchemists turn lead into gold, the speed of light? Superman stops bullets with his chest, but ducks when you throw the gun. The five-palm exploding heart? The limits of freedom of speech? That buying lighters is legal and that vandalism is wrong? Damn, that sure as hell sounds like a dad. Thanks, Dave, you are a good friend and a good father figure for all of us. P.S., this was not an attempt to put me in your will, but now that you mention it, you might as well. I just wanted to read that as an example of the human interaction between the kids and the teachers and the librarians and all the public service workers in the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jastelak Peck Castillo? I'm sorry.
Gracias. Buenas noches, estimados miembros de la Junta de Educación de Hartford.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education of Hartford.
Mi nombre es Joseltepe Castillo. Soy co-chair del Consejo de Gobierno Escolar.
My name is Joseltepe Castillo. I am the co-chair of the School Governance Council.
Y estudio inglés como segundo idioma por la noche en el Centro de Educación para Adultos.
And I study English as a second language as a student at Adulted in the evening classes.
Ah, voy a tratar de ser lo más breve posible, aunque tres minutos creo que no es suficiente para, para lo que vengo a decir.
I am going to try to stay within the three-minute limit, although I do not think that three minutes is enough for the things that I have to say.
Hace aproximadamente dos meses en Adult Education empezó a circular un rumor de que la escuela pretendía cerrarse.
Approximately two months ago, there was a rumor around Adulted who were being informed or misinformed that Adulted was going to be closed.
Y que por comienzos se habían despedido a dos maestros de dicha escuela.
That to begin with, two teachers had been laid off already.
Incluso empezó a circular por los salones una petición que seguramente ustedes tienen conocimiento, que fue dirigida a la Junta de Educación de Hartford.
And also, there was a petition that was signed up by some students, and it started to circulate around classrooms. And I'm quite sure, I hope that you know what I'm talking about, because it was addressed to the Board members.
Yo tengo copia de esta petición.
I have a copy of that petition.
Y resumiendo, la petición, alumno, la persona que redactó esta carta expresa su satisfacción por el despido de dos maestros.
The person who wrote this letter, who authored this letter, expresses his or her dissatisfaction for the laying off of two teachers.
Y por la intención de querer cerrarse la escuela.
And for the intention of wanting to close Adulted.
Ahora, yo quiero decirles que la persona que redactó esta carta está mintiendo.
I want you to know that the person who authored this letter was not telling the truth.
Y muchos alumnos que firmaron esta carta fueron engañados.
And a lot of the students who signed this letter were misled.
Porque la escuela no se va a cerrar.
Because Adulted is not to close.
Yo personalmente como co-chair fui a hablar con la directora Tina Jirer.
As a co-chair of the School Governance Council, I went personally to speak to Dr. Tina Jirer, the director.
Para tener una explicación de estos rumores.
To have an explanation about these rumors.
Ah, la directora Jirer me explicó que se estaba eliminando el turno del mediodía.
Dr. Jirer explained and clarified to me that they were trying to work to eliminate the middle-of-the-day slot.
Pero no el de la mañana ni el de la noche.
And not the one in the morning classes, the A.M. class or the P.M. class at night.
¿Y por qué se estaba eliminando el turno del mediodía?
And why was the middle-of-the-day, the middle-of-the-day classes being eliminated?
Porque no tenemos estudiantes.
Because we have no students there.
Esa es la razón.
That's the reason.
Yo tengo en mi poder también una lista de asistencia del ciclo escolar 2014-2015, 2015-2016, y lo que va del 2016 al 2017.
I have data with me and signing sheets for 2014, 2015, 2016, 2017 today.
Y nada más a manera de ejemplo, les puedo decir que en la materia de escritura, en el periodo 2015-2016.
And as a matter of example, in the period, on the writing period for 2015, 2016.
En la clase de una, dos de la tarde.
In the one to two P.M. class.
En el primer trimestre.
On the first trimester.
Agosto, septiembre, octubre, noviembre.
August, September, October, November.
En total tuvimos tres alumnos.
Totally, we had three students.
En el segundo trimestre, que abarca parte de noviembre, diciembre, enero, y febrero.
On the second trimester, which is part of November, December, and January.
Tuvimos cero alumnos.
We had zero students.
En el tercer trimestre, que abarca marzo, abril, mayo, y junio.
On the third trimester, which is March, April, May, and June.
Cero alumnos.
Zero students.
Ahora, mi pregunta es, ¿a quién le van a dar clases estos maestros?
So my question to you is, who are these teachers supposed to be teaching?
La escuela no se va a cerrar.
The school is not going to close.
Se redujeron horas para estos maestros.
There was a reduction of hours for these teachers.
Porque no teníamos alumnos.
Because we did not have teachers.
Afortunadamente.
I'm sorry, because we did not have students.
Desafortunadamente, no tengo mucho tiempo, pero tengo muchísimas cosas por decir. El tiempo se me terminó, pero yo quiero decirles que ustedes como autoridad.
Okay, but. Unfortunately, my, my, my time has run out, and I have a lot of things to tell you, and you as the authority.
Como autoridad de educación, resuelvan esta situación conforme debe de ser.
I ask that you look at this, that you review this, and to please resolve this.
Poniendo, poniendo.
With the right things in hand.
Poniendo intereses, anteponiendo intereses, este, colectivos sobre intereses individuales de estos dos profesores.
Okay, thank you.
I want you to put the interest, the collective interest is ahead of the interest of these two teachers.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, Mrs. Russell?
Good evening, everyone. Mother Superintendent, good evening and members of the panel. I'm a little bit nervous, because this is my first time talking to so many persons. Okay, I'm here today. First of all, my name is Cheryl Smichael Russell. I'm a nurse, a realtor, but most of all, I'm a mother of six kids who have, who have attended Noah Webster Microsociety in the West End of Hartford. I've lived in the West End for 19 years. Approximately 14 years ago, I started petition to have students at Noah Webster wear uniforms. When I approached the principal, who was Mr. Burr at the time, he told me that there was nothing he could do because this was a matter concerning parents and students. However, within a year, we were very successful in starting the uniform at Noah Webster, and it catapulted throughout Hartford. Today I'm here because I have a concern. All six of my kids went to Noah Webster. I still have three children at Noah Webster currently and a grandson at Noah Webster. The reason why I'm here today is because I'm concerned about the communication between the principal, the current principal, Mr. Myho, I'm not going to mispronounce his name. Thank you. And the teachers. A couple of months ago, first of all, let me say thank you to the wonderful teachers at Noah Webster. The teachers there are very experienced, caring and nurturing teachers, and without them, my students, my children would not be where they are today. On Sunday, we celebrate my daughter graduating from UConn, and she pays credit to the teachers at Noah Webster. And every chance they get to come back, they come back to thank those teachers. It's unfortunate that there are concerns now at Noah Webster between the teachers and the principal, but when I call to talk with the principal, I'm told that the matter is private and there is no information that I can get with this matter. Two of my children come home crying because of situation that's going on in the school that is not being addressed, and I feel helpless because I cannot get information from the principal. And my, my daughter is being questioned by DCF with regard into matters that's going on with the principal, with the principal and the teacher, and I still don't have any information. This is a concern that I would like to bring, and judging from the audience here today, it seems like this, there's not much awareness to this matter. I'm asking for your help because today I'm dedicating that this is a matter that I'm going to be taking in hand. My children have, they're willing to join me, and there are other parents from Noah Webster who are concerned as well. We need to start an open communication because there's teachers at Noah Webster who jobs are threatened because of the situation of miscommunication. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you.
Cheryl Russell? Oh, is that, that's you, okay, sorry. Uniqua Mayo? Take your time.
Hi, good evening. I'm nervous as well. It's my first time in front of a panel. Congratulations on your new position, and thank you all for the great work that you do with our kids. I am Uniqua Mayo. I'm a mother of Logan Booze, who was a student at Noah Webster as well, and I echo what she just said. But take it to a different level. My daughter was questioned without my knowledge. It wasn't a DCF-involved situation, but it was, it was six kids that was randomly questioned, and she was very, very upset. It was rumors floating around that her teachers would be fired. The best teachers that I've ever experienced in school from when I was in school. I went to all Hartford Public Schools. They care about these students. Mrs. Palluti and Mr. B., they're wonderful, and I'm really here to advocate on their behalf, but also to kind of put up, you know, some fillers on, how do you, you pull a child and you question children randomly? And when they come in organized fashion to tell you they'd like to speak to you about their teacher or they have a petition of letter, they're taught to stand up for themselves and to advocate. They weren't disrespectful by any means, because I don't play that. But when they went to, to go and to approach this principal, he told them that they were out of line. But it was okay for you to question six of them. But it was okay for you to question six of them and make them all cry. So I'm a little concerned by that. The psychological trauma that was, you know, that my daughter displayed when I picked her up, she was whispering, she was scared to talk, and she was like shaky. And when we got in the car, then she started to tell me and she started to cry. So this is a problem, and I would like it to be addressed. Thank you.
Erica Poole?
Good evening. I am Erica Poole. Thank you for hearing me out. Congratulations. Thank you for your attention. And just sticking with the same tone of the last two speakers, I am also a parent of three children that came through Noah Webster. I've experienced or been there long enough to have witnessed Freeman Burr, D. Cole, and now we have Mr. Mahalco just coming out to express the concern. I actually went to the Board of Education on Friday, and I met Ms. Bentham. Took vacation time because I came home to a child that was crying because of an incident that took place. Some things that he witnessed, that he didn't understand, that he heard adult conversations threatening that teachers were going to be fired. So him and about four or five of his other peers decided to write letters to advocate for the teachers. And when I went to the school to speak to Mr. Mahalco because I was concerned about the weight that he felt was on his shoulders, my son being twelve, and that he wanted to fix the situation, I was told that I could not have any information. So there's things that are going on that you guys need to intervene. So we're here to, number one, advocate for the teachers that are so wonderful because Noah Webster really is an exceptional school, but also to ask for your help in getting involved because there is things that are going on. And we as parents have to be trusting that when we go to work and we leave our children, that they're not going to suffer or be exposed to traumatic events, and that is exactly what's happening. I went and spoke, I met with Ms. Bentham and a couple of other people to file a report because we still don't have any answers, and there's no way for us to do it. So we're here asking for your help to get involved. And even if it's something that you can't relate to us, we're asking that you be notified. We're bringing this to your attention. But also, something needs to be done because we as parents can only do what we can do. So that's a big part of why we're here. We need your help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ram Ayalon? No, Ram, sorry.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Ram Ayalon. I'm a professor in education from Ed Leadership, Policy, and what is it called? Instruction Technology. And I'm glad to be here with two of my students that will speak after me. And I wanted to celebrate the two years of partnership that we established with Simpson Waverly. In the last two years, seventy students did their mentoring of kids. They worked in classrooms for thirty or twenty hours, field experiences, and they conducted school-wide activities. My art students did a mural in the school. They did school-wide activities. And last Friday, we organized a campus visit at Central Connecticut State University. We had a long history of preparing teachers and administrators, including your superintendent. And I wanted to tell you a little more about the partnership. It's not just Ed Leadership, but we also have the Department of Communication that one of the students became instructional technology instructors at the school and prepared a video. We have also social work interns that put more than a hundred hours this year. The CCSU is going to, thanks to our partnership, is going to contribute eighty computers to the school, eight LCD projects, and ten document readers. That's coming up. I have here, the secretary has a folder for each one of you that includes drawings from students that the students in the school made, essays that they wrote, and then finally, a paper by my education foundation course, two students are here, that wrote about Simpson Waverly and the neighborhood and the importance for that. This semester, we also spearheaded the forty-seventh university event celebrating, celebration with a panel with Dr. Thompson, former principal of Simpson Waverly, and now Superintendent de Bloomfield, and so on. And we would like, in the future, to have a formal partnership with Simpson Waverly and especially that the School of Education Professional Studies is developing a Center for Social Emotional Learning, so we'd love to engage with that. So thank you for having Simpson Waverly for us. We found a very supportive community there under the leadership of Dr. Watson, and we're really thankful for that. So thank you very much.
Mr. Kuzio Farado?
Good evening. So I am Krista Pizafarato. I am a student of Professor Ayalon from CCSU, and I did have the opportunity to experience and do my fieldwork at Simpson Waverly. And it was a fantastic experience. Through that experience, I had the opportunity to talk with many of the students, and in your booklet, you will find that a lot of the students wrote short essays about their experience at Simpson Waverly over the last however many years they've been there. Some of the students have been there since kindergarten. Others have moved there or been transferred there from other schools closing. The students have described their teachers as being nice, helpful, funny, supportive, makes learning fun, gives me confidence, encourages me, changed my life, helps me with my schoolwork, pushes me to do better. People in this school care about the students. These are all direct quotes from the essays they've written and from speaking to them. One of the students, Lillian Brown, a seventh grader, even wrote about a moment where the school really changed her life. She said, "I thought this school was stupid, but when I got into the second grade, I realized that this school was really helpful because of my family and I were having problems. The problem was that my dad was missing, and this made me sad. I didn't even want to go to school anymore, but this school changed my life. The school staff changed my life by talking to me." School needs to be a home away from home for kids, and it should be somewhere where students can thrive. And students thrive where they are comfortable. And this school provides that comfort for these students and provides a consistency in their lives. And I think uprooting students from a school takes away that consistency. And I think it needs to be taken into consideration how it would affect the students if the school were to close. Thank you.
Megan Westbrook?
Hi, good evening. My name is Megan Westbrook, and I'm a student at CCSU. I actually just finished my final semester before student teaching. And as, same as Krista, I was in Professor Ayalon's class, and we were at Simpson Waverly for part of the semester. We observed and volunteered at the semester. I was one of the lead editors of our class white paper, which we entitled "To Close or Not to Close Hartford Simpson Waverly Elementary School." I think Mr. Lou Kelly said it best at Simpson Waverly's School Community Night. There is no community without neighborhood schools, and we need to reinvest in our neighborhood schools. Our class delved right into the history of Connecticut school closings, the history of the north end of Hartford. We walked the neighborhoods surrounding the school with the community liaison and Principal Watson. We spent time with the students and community of Simpson Waverly. Through our research and observation, we worry that the north end of, the north end neighborhoods and north end schools are being neglected. In Simpson Waverly's backyards, it's a newly renovated Kiwi Park, yet Simpson Waverly is recommended to close. Our research shows that when you close schools without plans for reappropriation for the community, you are inviting urban blight or decay. Urban decay can already be seen throughout the north end of Hartford, and we believe that closing Simpson Waverly will only make the urban blight worse. Urban blight would lead to higher rates of criminal activity, which certainly sounds like a drawback on the multimillion-dollar renovation to the Kiwi Park. More importantly, what message are we sending to the students and community surrounding Simpson Waverly if this school closed? Hasn't this community been neglected enough? Even the mayor of Hartford won't send his children to Hartford Public Schools. In nineteen hundred, Mark Twain said, "Every time you stop a school, you will have to build a jail." What you gain at one end, you lose at the other. It's like feeding a dog its own tail. It won't fatten the dog. And I'm not saying that if you close Simpson Waverly, a jail will pop up in its place, but I do worry that, and our whole class worried, that closing the school would certainly damage the community. And as my classmate Krista just stated, let's not destroy the community at Simpson Waverly, but further, let's not destroy the community in the north end of Hartford, and let's keep open the Simpson Waverly school. Thank you.
Estela Morales?
Buenas noches, good evening. I am members of the board. My name is Estela Morales. I am a Hartford resident, and I also work at the Total Education Center in Hartford. I am a former student as well because in two thousand seven, eight, and nine, I was taking classes as a second language at the program. Now, I work there, and I am concerned about the situation with this manipulation with the students because some of them told me how they came to the board meeting. They told them that the school was going to be closed. First of all, that's not true. They were ride in cars, so tied that, I mean, it's dangerous to bring people like that. And like, I don't know how many people was in there, but they were saying that like a serpents in a car. So I felt, they told me that they felt that they were used, they were manipulated, and they, some of them are upset. So to me, I mean, as a, as a total learner too, because I mean, I'm a former student, I don't think it's fair to do that. I mean, if the teachers have a situation, they need to talk to the administration, and they don't have to manipulate our students. Also, I know Representative Arce, Angel Arce, came to the center three or four weeks ago because one of the students, the ones that were told that the school was going to be closed, so he came to see what was going on. And he came around one-thirty to two, and then he walked around those classes, and he saw no students. So thanks God, our program in the morning and in the evening is working great. I mean, we have a lot of students. We, I'm the facilitator, so we have classes, English as a Second Language classes. We have the citizenship classes in the evening. We have the childcare center in the evening. So for the parents that don't have, they need that service, we have that. So we have good numbers in the morning and in the evening. So I just want to kind of clarify this miscommunication, and I told the students that they have the right to ask, to investigate, to, don't just do what people is telling you to do. I mean, and I'm here for them, on behalf of them, the ones that feel upset about this situation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Richard Sugarman? Richard Sugarman?
Good evening. I'm Richard Sugarman. I'm the president of the Hartford Promise Scholarship Fund, and you have another wonderful group of students to be proud of tonight in addition to the Fox Scholars that you recognized earlier. I'm really here to celebrate a great news story for Hartford. Last week, we announced the second class of Promise Scholars made up of one hundred and thirteen students from the Hartford Public Schools. They represent, every high school in Hartford has Hartford Promise Scholars. In order to be a Hartford Promise Scholar, you have to earn it. You have to be a Hartford resident throughout high school. You have to go to Hartford Public High School throughout high school. You have to have a three-oh GPA throughout high school and have ninety-three percent attendance. And if you have those four things, you've earned the Hartford Promise Scholarship. What does that mean? You get $20,000 scholarship to attend any college or university in the country, any college or university in the country. Last year, the first group of Promise Scholars are attending thirty-seven different colleges throughout Connecticut and the United States. And of those students that are Promise Scholars last year, more than ninety percent of them have persisted and are being successful in their first year of college. You have a Hartford Promise Scholar sitting on that stage tonight. Not only is Giovanni a Fox Scholar, he's a Hartford Promise Scholar. He's earned those scholarships. And you have a future Promise Scholar sitting in the audience, Destiny, who is Giovanni's sister, who has big shoes to fill, but she told me she's going to make it. She's going to get there. And his mother told me she's sure she's going to get there. I want to share with you also that in addition to the Promise Scholarship that they receive, we also have partner colleges. So the University of Connecticut, Eastern Connecticut, they will match the Promise Scholarship if a Promise Scholar goes to those schools. University of Chicago will match the scholarship. And at University of St. Joseph's, if you're a Promise Scholar, you'll get free housing for all four years at the University of St. Joseph's. So there are wonderful partnerships really leveraging and continuing to provide additional support for these students. I want to thank all the funders of Hartford Promise, private funders in our community, including travelers in the Hartford Foundation and Hartford Hospital. I want to thank you all for your support. Superintendent, I want to thank you for your support of Hartford Promise, and I want to thank all the principals, all the counselors, all the teachers in every one of Hartford Public High Schools for all the great work they do to create Promise Scholars, to support Promise Scholars, and I look forward to seeing hundreds of more Promise Scholars as we go forward together. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Michael Downs?
Good evening, board members, Mr. Chairman, Superintendent. My name is Michael Downs. I live at Seventy-four Rosemont Street in Hartford. And I, last, two weeks ago, I came here and spoke concerning the fact there should be plenty of money around with all the cuts that were made in the last twenty-two years, but I'm sure it's no longer around. I'm not, I was being a little bit facetious. But some of the things that I mentioned, I did forget that we cut a lot of librarians and never brought them back. But I did forget that. But I got everything else. And one of the, a couple of things that we did cut were the special education teachers, social workers, psychologists. And for the reason that we were going to cut some of our special education programs and send them somewhere else. And I just read the paper today, and I also read in February, when the incident first happened, the death of Matthew Torotto, a student, a seventeen-year-old student who starved to death. That student was multiply handicapped. He was a responsibility, ultimate responsibility of the city of Hartford and the Hartford Board of Education. Now, the responsibility is spread around as well. The DCF was in on it, and they closed the case a month before he died. I mean, if a person's starving to death, you got, you know it more than a month before they die. they die. And the State Department of Developmental Disabilities and Handicap, they had to be involved in that. And all these organizations have social workers. I'm a social worker myself, among other things. And I had a degree from St. Joseph's College. But, so I know that social workers should have been sent out. They come from the DCF, they should have come from the Department of Developmental Disabilities, they should have come from the Hartford Public School system. They should have come from Oak Hill. Oak Hill, that's their job. I mean, they deal with the developmentally disabled and the handicapped. So, the point is that I'm trying to make today is that the ultimate responsibility is the Hartford Public Schools. And we dropped the ball, as I said, it's not the fault of the people that are here, except for one who's with me for the years, through the years, fighting these cuts. And he was a teacher at the time, and now he's on the board, and we elected him to the board, and I'm glad we did. He's doing a good job. But it's up to us. In the end, it's up to us. And I, and I want to make a comment before I leave the stage here, that the Great Path Program should ultimately be brought back to Hartford. It should not stay out in Manchester. It's just like the program that they had up there with the Capital Community College that, they brought that back to Hartford and immersed it with one of the high schools. The program, Great Path should be done, same thing should be done, can be merged with one of the magnet schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
Deanna Sullivan.
Good evening, board members. My name's Deanna Sullivan. I'm a lower elementary guide here at Annie Fisher Montessori, as well as a parent of two children enrolled here. I've had the unique opportunity of being a teacher at Annie Fisher when it was a community school 14 years ago, and I've kind of come full circle. So, I've been here through the redesign and the redistricting that came about, through Chef versus O'Neal, and I was sponsored by Hartford Public Schools to be trained as a Montessori guide. So, to give some background, a guide is a teacher, and each elementary classroom includes children from three grade levels. I teach lower elementary, consisting of first, second, and third grade. This is now my fifth year teaching here at AFM. Of the six or seven classrooms have been eliminated, but of the six or seven elementary positions, I'm the only guide that's been here for five years. Even then, I had maternity leave. But this has disrupted the cycle for hundreds of children in five years. We all know that children need basics before they can be educated, including love, connection, consistency, and we're lacking in consistency. We've lost a principal, assistant principals, coaches, PE teachers, music teachers, special education teachers, ELL, social workers, speech and language, SPO. It's a revolving door. We are now cutting our adaptation coordinator, which is also known as behavior tech, Louis Lumperz. He has been the only constant for our children, who are in the most need of love, consistency, and connection, and positive behavioral supports. He connects with children and families. As a bilingual, multiracial male, he connects and communicates with many families. They trust him, they respect him. His own three children attend Annie Fisher Montessori, and he is devoted to the success of the school. His job consists of so much more that is in his description, such as supervising arrival and dismissal of students at both AFM and STEM. He implements special programs such as Field Day and Earth Day, school plays, talent shows, performances. He's involved in everything. The safety drills, professional development, conducts restorative circles, and provides professional development for implementation to the staff. The addition of a .5 social worker isn't going to fill the void in his absence. We have been told there is room in the budget to secure his position at our school, and if this is the case, this position should not be eliminated due to the vital role that Louis Lumperz plays for our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Teresa Chan.
Good evening, board members, and good evening, Superintendent. It's nice to meet you. My name is Teresa Chan, and I am a fourth-year teacher at Annie Fisher Montessori Magnet School. And recently, it has also been brought to my attention that due to the impending budget cuts, the behavioral tech position may be cut from our school, and I'm here tonight to voice my strong dissent to that possibility. Montessori, as you may know, is an education philosophy that focuses on small group self-directed learning. One of the cornerstones for our school's success is creating the ideal environment in each classroom that will support that learning. The Montessori method does not allow for the type of traditional behavior motivation systems that other schools may get to use. In adhering truly to the Montessori method, we are not allowed to incentivize our students, for example, by giving like fake money to buy trinkets. We don't have a school store, nor do we believe in the use of stickers, or snacks, or other incentives to promote students to buy into the school. Our school's success, again, is based on creating, on the creation of an unwritten culture, so to speak, of respect and self-guided searches for knowledge, and this is extensively modeled by all staff, and the students also abide by it. Our current formula is a functioning one, and it's demonstrated by our continuing rising test scores, overwhelmingly positive climate surveys, and a lottery waitlist that's into the thousands at this point. We have worked together so that our school has become the most sought-after elementary school in the district. Retaining a position at our school that primarily supports the creation of that peaceful and learning-focused culture is imperative to our school's continued success. As a teacher who has been here for the last four years, and has seen a fair amount of turnover in staffing, I believe that removing the behavioral tech position will be severely detrimental to not only the student's success, but in staff retention as well, as public Montessori teachers, who are already difficult to come by, will be left with, without enough support in achieving the classroom cultures that are needed to function with this model of highly effective teaching. The behavioral tech position at our school does not only support dysregulated children, more than what a social worker can do with a defined caseload, it supports the holistic creation of classroom cultures that in turn drive the success of all students attending our school. In summation, no two schools are alike, and different schools have different staffing needs to achieve optimal success in the district. In the interest of maintaining a functioning public Montessori school and reducing the risk of staff turnover and promoting the continuity of student support, I urge you to consider the importance of a behavioral tech position for Annie Fisher Montessori Magnet. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you.
And that will conclude our public comment. Let's go to reports, and first up is the chair. I'm going to be really quick. I'm also going to do the finance committee report, since I'm the chair of the finance committee as well. Over the last, last week, the finance committee met with 48 principals, 48 schools, to do a budget review, just to ask the question if the building leaders are comfortable with the budgets. We know that the budgets are not ideal, but we were concerned and wanted to know if principals felt that they can meet their educational obligations with the budget that they had. Those meetings were pretty positive. We got a lot of feedback, got a lot of suggestions about the process, how to change the process, how to make the process more inclusive and collaborative, so that we can achieve the optimal, optimal level of support for our children. So, I thought that was a very positive thing. We're looking forward to continuing some, some other meetings before we finish the budget process in this budget season. So, that is that for the finance. And then the last thing I'll say is, I want to just announce standing committee assignments, and some of those assignments are going to change. So, I just want to just preference that before I read it. So, first up is Finance and Audit Committee. Chair is Craig Stallings, members Julio Flores, Richard Waring, Kim Oliver. Second, Family Community Engagement Committee. Chair is Julio Flores, members Robert Coto, Tiffany Glanville, Craig Stallings. Policy Committee, Karen Taylor, members Mike Brusher, Tiffany Glanville, Juan Hernandez. School Choice and Facilities Committee, Tiffany Glanville, Mike Brusher's committee member, Robert Coto, Karen Taylor, and Richard Waring. And I was going to add Mr. Hernandez to the finance committee, but didn't do that, so I will, oh, he's gone. All right, so I'm going to add him there. Ad-hoc Committee, School Building, School, yeah, yeah, I'm doing ad-hoc. Hartford School Building Committee, that would be members Michael Brusher and Craig Stallings. Human Resource Committee, that would be Kim Oliver as chair, and Michael Brusher and Julio Flores as members. And representative assignments, the Connecticut Association for Boards of Education, Craig Stallings, Capital Regional Education Council, or CREG, that would be Mike Brusher. Hartford Public Library, Juan Hernandez, and Metropolitan Learning Center, Mike Brusher. And so, like I said before, some of that may change, subject to change right now, those are standing committees. So, we are set to go into the next phase of our work, and that will conclude the chair's report. Madam Superintendent.
Sure. Good evening, members of the board and the community, and thank you, everyone, for joining us tonight. I'd like to start by thanking Principals Tanner and Schulman for their leadership at both Annie Fisher STEM and Montessori, and for hosting us this evening. I have several updates. First, I'd like to share that we continue in the conversations with the State Department of Education regarding programming at New Vision, and we have explored additional facilities for possible placement of the program in 2017, '18. We're currently considering locating the program for a one-year placement at the Lincoln Culinary Institute. We'll begin moving the program once our culinary program moves into Journalism and Media Academy, which is my next update. For next year, Culinary Arts will move over to JMA. This partnership is a structured approach that would include relocating Culinary Arts Academy students to JMA to provide students at both schools more in-depth offerings in each of the core curriculum, our math, science, social studies, and English, and also offer them a wider selection in each of their theme-based classes. The move also benefits students by addressing their academic needs, the physical plant needs, and even the school culture. And of course, it'll help mitigate some of our fiscal challenges as well. The partnership will certainly strengthen our footing forward towards the goal of one traditional comprehensive Weaver High School, and consequently upgrade the quality of education for the students. And one point to also note is that the partnership between Culinary Arts and JMA for next year will begin our efforts to increase enrollment that is needed to compete in the Central Connecticut Conference. Weaver is leaving the conference at the end of this year due to low enrollment, so that's also an added benefit for, for this partnership. One given update regarding Capitol Prep, there certainly has been a lot of coverage in the media with regard to the audit of the State Department of Education concerning Magnet School lottery processes. Capitol Prep was sampled, and they were looking at student admissions outside the lottery process. The state auditors focused on the academic years before the current leadership there, and as stated by the auditors from the audit of the state, Capitol Prep's operations plan was approved by the State Department of Education, and the plan did allow admitting some students under special circumstances in addition to the lottery admissions. You know, and you've heard me talk about my commitment to being transparent and accountable for our efforts at the district, and the possibility of students being admitted outside a formal lottery process in any of our magnets is taken very seriously. And as it relates to Capitol Prep, the data that was cited in the press coverage came from an audit of admissions in 2013, 2014 year, and also 2014, '15 years. We've looked at current data, data for this year, and there are no students for this year that were admitted outside the regular lottery process. I also sent a memo to our principals stating my expectation at Hartford Public Schools that students cannot, students cannot be enrolled in a magnet school outside of the lottery process. We do know that there are situations and where, there are rare circumstances that merit special consideration, but that has to be discussed, not only with myself, but also with the State Department of Education moving forward. I also do have a meeting, an upcoming meeting with the commissioner at the State Department of Education to really seek clarity as to some of these processes and protocols that are outlined, not only in the Capitol Prep operations plan, which by the way, I have requested a review not only of Capitol Prep, but of all of the magnet school programs and their operations plans. It's time for us to take a step back and really look at all of the operations plans, and I look forward to engaging in the conversation with the commissioner as to clarity for the processes moving forward. Some special recognitions for some of our, some of our schools. Principal Julie Goldstein reports that Breakthrough Magnet School was named a National School of Character by the Schools of Character Organization. A total of 84 schools were recognized nationally this year, and Breakthrough Magnet was one of them. It's actually the only school in Connecticut, the first school in Connecticut to receive that, that recognition. Also, Burr Community School is among the top-performing schools in the Governor's 2016 Summer Reading Challenge. We also congratulate Maria Colon Sanchez's school, because they are, the CAS is the Connecticut Association of Schools Elementary School Year Award nominee. The school has been selected as one of two finalists for the Connecticut Association of Schools Elementary School of the Year Award. The committee is actually going to be visiting the school tomorrow to verify and validate the work that they do and to complete the selection process. So, we're going to stand by and see the results, but regardless of the outcome, we know that we want to congratulate Principal Redsec for her leadership of the school, and whether the school is selected or not, being one of two, you know, even being the runner-up or actually the actual winner is a great accomplishment, and we're proud of that. Let's see, we received the 2017 awards from Magnet Schools of America. Breakthrough Magnet and HMTCA were present, were presented with awards of excellence. Webster and Sports Medical Science Academy got recognized as a school of distinction. And on separate news, U.S. News recently released their 2017 rankings of the best public schools in the United States. The numbers for this year include data of 22,000 public schools throughout the nation, and highlighted were University High School of Science and Engineering. They were awarded a silver medal, and Great Path Academy was awarded a bronze medal. So, congratulations. My last update is in regard to our Office of the Child Advocate. We have submitted a request for a proposal for an independent monitor. We shared the request for proposal with the Office of the Child Advocate to get their feedback. We're waiting for the Child Advocate to give us feedback, and they will send it out for a, you know, RFP, and see if we get any interested individuals and/or agencies for this work. And my last report with regard to OCA is in relation to concern number five, which speaks to an analysis of our special education programming, and seeking assistance from outside experts to identify and remedy programmatic deficiencies that contribute to injuries, including deficient training and inadequate personnel or inadequate supervision of special education programming. And I mentioned in a previous report that the Center for Children with Special Needs was contracted for the initial assessment, and they are in the process of submitting an extensive report that I will share with all of you. But in a nutshell, the comprehensive review really proposes that we have to have a systemic improvement approach. that we have to, um, have a systemic improvement approach for our specialized programs, uh, through a, uh, developing a model within the district that is gonna train other schools in our district. Um, you know, they found that there were some strengths in our programs, but many, many opportunities for improvement, um, especially as it relates to the preschool programs for students with autism and multiple disabilities, as well as the high school programs for students in our transitionary years, eighteen to twenty-one. Um, I will, um, share that information with you once it becomes available. Uh, that concludes the Superintendent's report.
Uh, thank you, Madam Superintendent. Um, I just wanted to add, I forgot in my report that, um, most of the people who registered complaints or concerns at the last meeting, those complaints were vetted, and they were, um, they were, the inquiries were made, and they were all, uh, handled. So I wanna appreciate, I appreciate that, and I wanna thank the staff for that. I, um, I appreciate that a lot. Um, so we're gonna move on to committee reports. Um, Mr. Flores, Parent Community Engagement.
Thank you, Mr. Stallings. The Family and Community Engagement Team held a learning session on May fourth at the Sports and Medical Science Academy for school principals and parent leaders. At this session, we distributed the Revised School Governance Council Handbook in both English and Spanish, uh, also the Family and Community Engagement Action Plan and other resources for SGCs and parent groups. The session was very well attended, and there was opportunity for group discussion and sharing. Meeting participants had some concerns about the structure for parent groups, an issue that we will be taking up at committee. At our meeting on May ninth, we debriefed on the May fourth training, and also began planning for the annual SGC forum to be held on June sixth. We also began discussion on some policy issues that we feel need clarification, including the definition of an official parent group, the process for SGC election, and conflicts of interest on the SGC. Uh, we will continue doing research on these issues uh, with the goal of eventually developing recommendations to the Policy Committee. And that concludes your report.
Thank you, Mr. Flores. Uh, Ms. Taylor, Policy Committee?
Thank you, Chairman. So the Policy Committee met on Monday, May eighth, for an extended meeting. Um, at this meeting, we had the Superintendent come along with Peter Dart, who is the Executive Director of Performance Management, to talk about the Central Harassment Prevention Team activities. Um, we reviewed really like the, the function of the committee, which is really to, um, to make sure that all faculty and staff and students, parents, and other members of the school community treat each other with dignity and respect per the Board policy on harassment. Um, we talked a, a little bit about the members and, um, adequate representation in terms of like the different demographics of folks within the community, teachers, um, principals, um, male, female ratio. We wanted to have a good representation within the district. Um, we also talked a little bit about the fact that once the independent monitor is found, this committee and the function and structure of it may be under review as well. Um, we, we actually had several things on our agenda for that meeting, um, but because we get so entrenched in the work that we do because we're committed citizens, um, sometimes we don't always get to, to meet all of the, the tasks that we lay out for us. But we also discussed the policy accountability review. There was an audit that was done on the five thousand series draft report, um, that was given to us that really just spells out like what the compliance, um, mechanisms are for those particular policies within the five thousand draft series. We're gonna take that up at the next Policy Committee meeting. Um, we reviewed the suicide prevention policy, and we had a visitor, Julian, Joanna Jackson, um, who really combed through the policy with us. There weren't really significant changes. Um, there's some language that changes from like Student Assistance Team to Crisis Team mostly, um, within the policy that was significant. So we talked a little bit about that, and that is gonna be coming for a first read this evening, um, suicide prevention. At our next Policy Committee meeting, we hope to tackle abuse and neglect, um, and to continue the discussion on physical restraint and seclusion. Um, that concludes the policy report.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Uh, Mrs. Glanville, School Choice and Facilities?
Thank you, Chairman. Um, so School Choice and Facilities Committee, we met on May second. Um, we had, um, a facilities update and, um, a review of, um, some choice, um, lottery status. At the time, the lottery had not, um, run yet. It ran, I think, the day after, or a couple of days after we had the meeting. But at the time, we had had an update that there had, they were working on it. They had been, uh, I think they had run seven, uh, eleven simulations up to that point of the lottery. Um, and we had some, um, discussion of the schools that are considered to be incubating still, um, which was helpful to clarify. So there are three of them that are technically still considered incubating by the state. It's, um, uh, Batonsa STEM, Moylan Montessori, and, um, Hartford Pre-Kingdom Magnet is actually still technically considered to be incubating as well. We had, um, we, we discussed the, um, the, uh, Culinary, uh, JMA colocation, which, uh, Dr. Torres Rodriguez, um, explained in her report, and I will just clarify that, um, similarly to the, um, Capital Community College Magnet and Capital Prep colocation, this is, um, this is a, a matter that, you know, all these kinds of things are, are coming to the Facilities and Choice Committee, um, these sort of colocation proposals, and they are, um, there, there's, there's no, um, board vote to, uh, determine these colocations other than, um, our vote on the budget, um, where these, these, uh, efficiencies are reflected, um, will be effectively our, our approval of these colocation proposals. And, um, we also had some, um, discussion of the Phase Three Weaver Campus, um, which is the athletic facilities part of, of the Weaver design, which initially was not in the specs that we, um, as a board, had a workshop on a couple of months ago. But that phase is actually, um, it's moving forward now, and will be, I think, I don't know if it was already approved at the time. It was headed for the Hartford School Building Committee to, um, be, uh, approved or discussed. So, thank you. So it was. Um, and, um, and that was a discussion of all of the additional athletic facility renovations, which are, um, I have more detailed information on if anybody's interested, but it was, um, the Doc Hurley Fieldhouse, in addition to like expanding the lane, the number of lanes on the track, um, lighting. There's a, there's a nice long, um, list of things that are gonna be, hopefully, depending on, on, um, the, the, the total cost of everything once it gets determined, included in the renovation now for Weaver. Um, and then, lastly, we, um, we discussed two renaming proposals, and I'm gonna, um, just go ahead and, um, sorry to, to take so long, read those now because it's actually our policy that when we get a proposal to, um, rename a part of a facility, that we, um, we discuss it and announce it at a board meeting, and then there's a time period where the public can comment on it after that, um, for, for several months. So, um, the first one was, um, to name Buckley High School's basketball court in honor of Mr. Luis Bazano, Jay Bazano. Uh, Mr. Bazano began his coaching career at Buckley High School in nineteen fifty-three, and from nineteen fifty-three to nineteen sixty-six, he amassed a record of two hundred two wins and eighty-six losses at the original Buckley High School located on Maple Avenue, currently MD Fox. His teams won fifty consecutive games during his thirteen-year span. He lost only four home games. Mr. Bazano will be posthumously welcomed to the Buckley High School Athletic Hall of Fame in October of twenty seventeen. He also served as the Director of Health, Education, and Athletic Director for the Hartford Schools, serving Hartford for over forty years. So the second request was, um, Parkville's, um, auditorium to be named in honor of David Mahullen. Parkville Community School is requesting to name the auditorium in honor of David Mahullen, who was the first principal of Parkville and o- one of only three people that can lay claim to being principal of Parkville. It's longevity. Um, the other two being Elizabeth, um, Michaelis, and now, uh, Dirk Olmsted. He remained the principal until his retirement in nineteen ninety-two. Mr. Mahullen was an inspiration to thousands of students and teachers throughout his career and was a pillar in the Parkville community. So per our policy, three, uh, thirty-five oh five, the naming of facilities or parts of facilities, um, the committee reviewed these requests, and now I'm, I'm, I'm announcing them here at the Board. Um, the next steps will include seeking public input, um, and then eventually this will come to, before the Board for a vote in, um, a couple, couple meetings from now. That concludes my report.
Uh, thank you. Thank you so much. Mr. Bazano should have been inducted first.
Well, I think that they were hoping to have it, it, it actually be around the same time, that October, so, yeah.
That's impressive. Um, thank you. Alright, so that concludes, uh, committee reports. Um, I just want to take two seconds to thank the staff that are here, 'cause it's been a long day. See, you guys are hurting, you're tired, but just wanna say I appreciate it, uh, doing the hard work all day and sitting here. Uh, so thank you, thank you, uh, and thank you, Kate, back there. Alright. Um, so business agenda. Item number one, uh, Management Continuation Approval, Great Path Academy. Uh, the continuation of management agreement between the Board of Regents of the Higher Education on behalf of Manchester Community College and the Hartford Public Schools for the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen school year. The recommendation action is that the Hartford Board of Education authorized the Superintendent to extend the management contract with the Board of Regents through the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen school year. Uh, do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
So moved, and seconded, uh, Dr. Rodriguez?
Yes. Do we have any, um, questions for, um, our partners at Manchester Community College?
Well, if you can come to the table, please.
We have, uh, Dr. Kara Burks, Assistant Superintendent for Instructional Leadership with Oversight of Great Path Academy, Principal Tori Niles, and Dr. Duncan Harris, Dean of Student Affairs at MCC.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So this is a, um, a continuation of a one-year. Um, usually, this is the fifth year. The contract is expired, and it is my understanding in meeting with, uh, the President of the College, Dr. Glickman, that, um, we will have a one-year extension, um, for, for the contract.
That's correct.
Yep. So if there are any questions that the Board has?
Any, any questions?
I have a question. Just about the, um, I don't recall this being a yearly, uh, yearly contract. It may have been a little bit longer before, so I'm wondering if this is like a, are we looking at an intermediate agreement, which we're doing one year, and then you guys are waiting to see whether or not we'll continue, or you, are we do, why are we doing this for a year? I guess is what I'm, what I'm asking you, to be, to be perfectly frank.
Sure. The, um, contract, it was, the previous contract was a five-year term.
Right.
Uh, and what we decided is there was a contingent plan in the contract to allow for another year with another year after that, based on kind of, uh, the, the, the current landscape and some of the things we elected to, to, uh, extend for the year with another contingent year after that. Uh, let me just say that, that we've been very happy with the school. A lot of the folks that are here are aware of the history. I've been involved with the, the, uh, high school since its inception in, in two thousand and two, over fifteen years since it was, uh, uh, we were planning it in, in the high school. I mean, uh, just in terms of the plans. And, uh, I think as indicated by the USA News Report and other indicators, that we've built what could be considered nationally a model middle college high school, uh, designed to provide opportunities for students, uh, to complete, uh, their college education in accelerated way and access to higher education. And so we've been very happy, uh, with the, the way in which Hartford Public Schools has managed the high school. Extremely happy.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Um, I just have one. Um, is the, um, with the, the state consolidating the community colleges, is that a factor in your decision to go to what may appear to be a, a, some kind of a year-to-year um, kinda thing? Um, some of, um, of us on, on, on our side were trying to figure out how we can bolster the program, uh, and sort of attract more of a regional presence from Manchester, Tallinn, so forth and so on. Um, so I guess what we're trying to figure out is through our consolidation and our restructuring, how, what are we, how do we consider Great Path? Do we consider Great Path, um, a long-term partner? Uh, and should we figure out that in our consolidation, or should we simply just resign ourselves to the possibility that the relationship will be ending?
I don't have a crystal ball myself. I think we all read the, the current in the morning with regard to kind of the state budget situations, which, you know, we are subject to. Uh, I think that the, the current contract is indicative of the, the partnership that we're desirous of. As soon as I was looking at the data from, uh, and somebody mentioned before about it, it, it being, you know, uh, not a Hartford school, but it, we have seven hundred and ninety-two students that reside in Hartford at the college.
Right.
Eleven, almost twelve percent of our students reside in Hartford. I think what we've created over the last fifteen years is a clear and effective pipeline for, for residents of the Hartford community to have access to higher education. Uh, and so I think that, that the, the work that we've done speaks for itself, that it's an exemplar at the national level of what a middle college, high school should be. Uh, I would hope that the residents and the citizens of the state, uh, would recognize that also, and, and as we, we get better, uh, information regarding what the budget situation will be, we'll, we'll see what we've created and invest in it. Um, and so I, I, like I said, I can't come here and say for certain, but I think that based on what we've built and what we've created, the outcomes, the opportunities we provide for students coming through that school, that it, that, that the evidence is, is, is clear. They're irrefutable.
Well, I, I say that 'cause we would agree.
Yeah.
Um, and that partnership is important. It's important to us, and it's a, um, it's a, um, it's needed.
Yeah.
It's needed. So if we can figure out how to help, um, or figure out some kind of, basically, I would just encourage the Superintendent to figure out how to create more dialogue around it so we can help one another, uh, figure out that landscape, 'cause this is very important. Principal's doing a wonderful job.
Phenomenal.
Uh, we sat down during the budget discussion. She was pretty frank. Um, because we don't have to worry about the budget, we simply had a, a, a real conversation about programming and, and how we can work together in the future. And so it is a, um, a school that I, I, I'm excited about. Um, I was part of the graduation last year. I think I'm coming this year. Um, and so I, I was very proud, um, of those students, and it's a wonderful program. It's a wonderful school, and it is a, um, is one of our treasures.
Yeah, the faculty, staff, and, and, uh, of the college feel that same way. And so, um, you know, I can provide you with confidence in that, and that, um, that we, we, we recognize what we've created and built together and a true partnership between Hartford Public Schools and, uh, the Connecticut Community College system. And so, um, proof's in the pudding with regard to that.
Okay, well, whatever we can do to help, and please, um, as soon as you know anything, please reach out to Superintendent. Uh, I haven't more questions anymore? Questions or comments? Alright, um, so the Chair calls, um, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it?
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, item number two, Contract Continuation Approval. Power School Group, two hundred eighty-three thousand five hundred nine. Power School Group LLC provides the district with Power School, a student information system which collects, stores, and analyzes student-level data and uses it, uses it to complete various state and federal mandated, uh, reports. It includes enterprise infra- infrastructure, monitoring, technical support, and service, as well as access to professional learning and staff members. This contract continuation is expanded to include tools for building systematic, system-wide assessments aligned with smarter balance and provide schools with detailed analysis based on their assessments to guide instructional improvements. The expansion replaces systems that are staged to fourth phase out. Uh, alright. Now, the recommendation of the, the recommendation, the recommended action of the Hartford Board of Education authorized the Superintendent to execute the contract with Power School Group for the term delineated, uh, contract, no, not to exceed two hundred eighty-three five hundred, two hundred eighty-three thousand five hundred nine, ending June thirtieth, twenty eighteen. Do I have a motion for this?
So moved.
So moved. Is there a second? Second, uh, Dr. Rodriguez?
Yes, I'm actually going to call up, uh, Kate England, our Chief Academic Officer, and Abby Olden and Quint from our data office, and, um, there are some intricacies in, with this, um, uh, request here and what you're going to vote on, given that the cost of this expansion also has savings in it. And so I asked, um, Kate and, and Abby that you kind of unpack that a little bit, um, given that we are going to discontinue, uh, the Sun Guard Performance Plus contract and reduction in some of the licenses for our MAP. And as you know, MAP is our computerized, um, testing. It's an adaptive test, um, in reading and math, and, you know, the difficulty of the questions increased, uh, depending on how, how well the students do. Um, and Power School, just to give you background, um, has supported the district for several years now. Um, it's our, uh, student information system. We've used that since two thousand and nine, and, um, the system currently holds, um, eight years of student data for not only enrollment, class rosters, our, um, attendance, discipline, grades. You know, we do, we pull a lot of the information from, uh, Power School to do all of our reporting to the state, if you will. Um, and the student information system component is, is also used daily by our staff to record and analyze, um, some of our, our reports. So I'm gonna, um, hand it over to you if there are any specific questions, um, for Abby and Kate.
Any questions? Mr. Brusher?
Question about, just, uh, just what do you do?
Which one?
In, you know, explain what you do.
As in, as in your role?
Yeah.
Chief Academic Officer?
Sure, it's your program, correct?
Is in relation to Power School?
So, part of my responsibility as Chief Academic Officer is to oversee the work of curriculum instruction and media literacy, as well as the Office of Data and Accountability. So in that context, Power School is our system that, as Dr. Torres Rodriguez indicated, organizes all of our student information, demographics, discipline, et cetera. What we're hoping to do is expand the use of Power School to allow us to create assessments that we can use consistently across the district, four times a year at a minimum. The other thing that this expansion would allow us to do is to have teachers create their own assessments on the spot in classrooms to help them better understand where students are as they're instructing them. So, in terms of my work overseeing this, it really helps me link the work of curriculum and instruction and also the work of our data systems to make sure that all of us better understand where our students are, both daily and across consistent periods of time.
And this information you gather from the students, basically what they do in school, or is it personal, or?
So, and so...
Background, their background, or something like that?
No, so it organizes our... Well, it organizes some personal information, student ID numbers, students' names, their data that's associated with them. And then, the rest of it is how our students are performing on various assessments. Help us to... Help us organize that information.
And once you determine how they're performing, do you do anything to like better their performance, or... Yes?
Right, so that's absolutely the goal. It's a great question. Our goal is to be able to use the assessment system to help teachers primarily better understand where students are in order to change their instruction to meet students' needs.
And who are these people who help the teachers?
Well, instructional leaders, coaches. We drive the work at Central Office to assist principals.
They're not teachers.
So, teachers themselves are making decisions about students and the instruction based on the assessment information they have. And if they need other people to help them think about it, we have numerous people who can help them think about it.
It seems to me like these people are, as usual, these people are coming from the office telling teachers who face students every day how to teach those students. Correct?
So maybe I'm not explaining it clearly. Let me try again. So, this system is designed for teachers to use the data information to better understand how to instruct their students. So they're looking at their data, they're looking at their students' assessments, and they're making decisions about how to change their instruction to help students perform better.
Right. So what do coaches do? You said coaches and people from the board, right?
So if teachers need further assistance, they may ask a building coach to help them. If they're not sure about a different method of instruction that might work for a student, they could certainly enlist the coaches' services.
And these coaches are experts?
They have a certain body of knowledge.
Sure, yeah.
With... Can I just clarify in terms of the actual data that is already housed in Power School and the new data that will go into Power School? And how the program will help facilitate the connection between both? Pieces of data.
Good evening.
Hi.
So, our Power School system, as it currently exists this school year, houses our student enrollment data, which includes their background information, such as their demographics, their emergency contact information, their health information, that type of information. As well as, it also contains our attendance, daily attendance and period attendance for students, discipline information, if any behaviors occur, as well as their grades in all of their coursework. So, the expansion of this system would allow us to integrate our test scores as well in their classes and on our district assessments into one system, so it can be integrated with their enrollment, attendance, behavior, and grades. So we can have a more efficient and integrated system for our teachers to be able to access their student information and then act upon it to make decisions based on data. In addition, this would help the district become more efficient in that we could better monitor how students are performing on our curriculum and our standards, the Connecticut standards, within our system, which would help us have better information about how we're performing on performance metrics for our district in our core content areas. One of the mentions was that this system would eliminate our Sun Guard contract, which has been our previous assessment system. This would eliminate that contract and put it all together with our Power School student information system and save us some money in doing so. So the Sun Guard would go away, but also, we would be able to reduce some of our licenses that we use with our NWEA MAP assessment. And we can begin collecting assessment data for our students on standards-based assessments for math, ELA, but also other content areas that MAP doesn't address, such as science, social studies, history, art. It would expand the number of teachers who could use the system to monitor standards and instruction for their students.
Well, it seemed to me something like you're getting information overload coming down on the teachers, correct? I mean, the teachers are handling this information, these assessments? Yes?
The teachers are administering these assessments to students anyway within the curriculum. So these would be their quarterly assessments that they administer to students through the curriculum. So instead of giving the MAP assessment on top of those, we would be collecting information from the teachers that they're administering through their curriculum and then use that information to inform us about our performance and growth as a district and in our classrooms.
And the ultimate goal is what?
The ultimate goal is for us to be able to monitor our district performance and growth, but also to provide interventions to students and enrichment opportunities to students who could benefit from those supports, but also to provide growth opportunities for our teachers and identify areas where they can be supported.
Ms. Slava?
So I just wanted to... I wanted to clarify that, so I know we, as a district, have to do... I think it's... We have to do some sort of testing, like the MAP testing. It's like a requirement of us being an alliance district. So, the way I understand it is this is a way... This is an investment in decreasing our reliance on MAP and developing other... Allowing teachers to develop other assessments that may or may not be more tailored to what they need to do, but that will also qualify as the kind of assessment that we have to do under the alliance grants.
So, this would help us reduce our reliance on packaged standardized assessments and to use more authentic assessments that are standards-based and aligned to the curriculum, so that we can monitor the performance of our students.
And we're confident that that meets the requirements?
Yes, and I just... Thank you for the prompt. So, yes, I did... I did reach... I did reach out to the State Department to seek their guidance regarding this change in our plans. And they did affirm that this would be acceptable as long as the assessments that we were using to monitor our achievement and growth in reading and math, as long as those assessments are of high quality and are administered to all children across the district. And that we are using calibrated scoring practices and high-quality scoring practices for educators. Thank you.
Mr. Flores?
As a parent, I log on to Power School several times a week. Could you speak to the group about the use that parents give to this?
Absolutely. So, Power School contains a parent portal feature, which would allow... Which currently allows parents to monitor their contact information about their child, but also their attendance and grade information currently in real-time as it exists. This would also allow us to integrate the students' test scores into the system so that they can see how they're performing in their coursework on a quarterly basis or more frequent, however the teacher records those grades. In addition, I would also add that this would be a way for us to engage our students, because it does have a student portal as well, which would help students do some self-assessment and monitoring on their own.
Ms. Taylor?
Thank you, Abby and Kate, for indulging us in this line of questioning. I have a question and I also have a thought. So the first question, I didn't see in here like the financial breakdown. So I really want to know, like, after year one, what is the actual cost to the district? Because we do have some savings there with MAP and Sun Guard, right? So can you talk to me about the actual number after the year-one savings that we're agreeing to right now?
So, the year-one cost is the amount referenced, the 283,509. That would be the year-one cost. That does include a one-time implementation cost for system setup for the assessment content and analytics bundle, the one-time setup for that system, as well as PD for us to train a core group of people in the use of that system. That amount is approximately $15,000 the first year, and that would go away for the second year. So approximately, the cost would be somewhere around $270 annually for this system, which would include the student information system plus the assessment analytics and content system. We also expect... So we had some savings here with the elimination of Sun Guard, which was $118,000, but also some additional savings with the reduction of our NWEA MAP licenses. So that was a scale back of grades nine and 10, and also a reduction of licenses for MAP, science. And I'll mention that one second. So, science assessment licenses that we've been using, a reduction of those, as well as a reduction because of declining enrollment. So we were able to save on our MAP contract, what we hope to save on our MAP contract, approximately $52,000. The state of Connecticut is released... We're going to be releasing a new next-generation science standards assessment within the next couple of years. So, hence the change from moving away from older science standards-based assessments to the newer assessments. Plus, within the Power School assessment system, we would be able to build in our own science assessments, just like we would for math and ELA and the other content areas. For year two, if we continue on this trajectory of being able to reduce our reliance on NWEA MAP and standardized assessments, we could potentially save $141,000 by not renewing our MAP contract.
Okay, which would make the cost... So what's the likelihood of that? That's highly likely, right? Or?
It's highly likely.
Okay, I guess I'm just like looking for like, what's like the like layman's number? Like what are... You know, like the bottom line? Like, so like, we're saving this, we're saving that? Like, this is what this costs? Like, what is?
So for year two, if we're not renewing our NWEA contract, then we're saving approximately $140,000 for the district.
So it'd be a total of about $140,000 for the contract in full, as opposed to 283.
Okay, yeah, that's helpful.
Right, yeah, sorry.
Thank you. The other question that I had was, I don't know... So teachers have access to all of like the attendance, home information, discipline information, grades for that particular year or for the student as a whole? Like?
It's for the students who are enrolled in their classroom. For that.
For that.
Historically.
Historically? Okay, so...
Rich is nodding, he said yes.
So historically, so like, so if I have a third grader in my class, I could see what happened in pre-K, if they were in the district, pre-K, K. For me, like, as a parent, I'm thinking that that's problematic. And I, even as a person, right, I think that that's problematic. I don't know, it seems like it's able to custom... You're able to customize like what people have access to. It seems like it's... So I don't know if it's necessarily a good thing for someone to have access to like everything you've ever done, right? Like, discipline, attendance, like, thinking about some of the students within our district, thinking about myself, I wouldn't want someone to have, that I'm meeting for the first time in a classroom, to have full access to my life and like maybe discipline that I've had over the years to... I mean, I don't know if this makes good sense.
So the system has a current business standard that we've been using since we've had Power School since 2010. And our system administrator is actually in the audience. So he fully controls, Richard Lindwall, over there, is our system administrator. He fully controls however the access and security is set up for the system. So if there were any concerns, we could certainly internally address how that information is shared. I imagine that the assessment tool would function in a similar manner as the student information side of it. But we... I can certainly get more into depth about that, if you would like.
Yeah, I think that's something that we should definitely think about. I'm thinking about like tracking students and, I mean, I'm thinking about like how my son was in pre-K versus like him being a model first grader. You know, and I just wouldn't want for our students to be necessarily like pigeonholed into certain, you know?
I also think that there are certain lenses that different individuals employed in the school can see. A principal may be able to see a certain view that a teacher might not be able to see. So it depends, there are different security layers.
That would be helpful. Thank you so much.
I want to say this kind of jokingly, but maybe the policy committee can come up with a policy in terms of who sees what. I'm just joking, just giving her more work to do.
Well, if you want more work to do.
Well, I think we should do an assessment as to the current layers and rights that people have.
That was funny. Madison Jones?
Oh, okay, so the exception will allow teachers to see where students need help in with the MAP test? With like the testing?
So, the system will allow integration of this additional piece, two things. One is that they will be able to administer the quarterly assessments that you do within your coursework already. They'll be able to do it within... Administer them within the system, but then also look at how you performed on standards and on items of the assessment. The other piece, the analytics tool piece, will allow us to integrate state assessment results and previous assessment results, SAT, PSAT, and bring it into the system. So it's all part of the student's electronic record, so that your parents can see results in the system and you can monitor everything all together in the system and your teachers.
So you can see like where... How they did on the test and see?
All together with their grades.
Okay, so I have a scenario.
Okay.
Say I'm the student and I'm taking a test. And I'm doing the math and I'm doing the English. But there's no... I go there, I get back my scores, but there's no math teacher to help me understand what I'm doing or like what areas I need help in or to help me, you know, help me to do better next time. So how will... How will you ensure that we get help, the things that we need?
Yep.
So, a teacher who's teaching the content area would be the person who's administering the assessment to the student. So that would be the person who would be responsible for looking at your results with you, potentially?
Say if there is no teacher. Because at my school, there's no math teacher. So if I take the test and there's a math teacher, who do I go to?
For example, there are some schools that have no certified math teacher. So, in that content area, who is qualified to actually bring the student through what they should improve on, what they're doing well, so and so on, I guess? That would be your question?
Yeah.
So is... Are you asking for the MAP test or the MAP test results or the tests that the teacher is going to develop? The quarterly test or both?
The results and both, yeah.
So, I would imagine that would be a case-by-case scenario that we could take up with the building administrator. I mean, certainly there should be somebody in the building, whether it's another math teacher who is certified in mathematics, to help students with the results would be a likely answer. The building leader, him or herself?
Mr. Coto?
A lot of great points. I support the contract, so you don't have to worry about that particular thing. And to the extent it saves money, I think that's also helpful. Just two things. I mean, I think from a board member's perspective, what I'd like to see from the superintendent and the administration is, how is this data being used to support people in the school? And I think what that... That's what Mike was getting at. And I think that Giovanni's also getting at is, you know, what are we doing to actually take this information and say, oh, our students don't do well on the scientific method or whatever, whatever particular things? And what are we doing to make that, make that happen? And maybe not necessarily at that granular level, but like, how are we supporting as an administration, as a school board, the schools? Because I think, otherwise, it's just a... It is a lot of... It's a lot of paper collection, it's a lot of data collection. And from the view of a teacher, from the view of a student, maybe even some parents maybe not at all. It just seems like you're collecting data and not really doing a whole lot of helpful stuff with it. And I'm not saying that's necessarily true, but I mean, that could be the perspective of some parents. So that's my first point. The final point is, you guys can get rid of the... The, the final point is, you guys can get rid of the map test, I've been telling you since you got it, that you should get rid of it. Um, it's, it, it, it's, it, it has questions on it that kids have never seen, right? So you have a kindergartner, goes to the computer, has never seen a question or that type of concept before, and the kid's sitting there, why, why am I wasting my time taking a test in which questions and content is there that I've never seen? So it can be computer adaptive, that doesn't make sense. You wanna see whether the kids know your, your standards and whether they know the curriculum, not whether they know something that they've never been taught, right? So get rid of it, the sooner you can do it, the faster, the better, um, save the money. Um, there are other things, other assessments that you can use that you can tailor to your curriculum that you, you know, that you have designed. So I think, you know, that's the last thing I would say about that, but um, those are my two big, two big points.
No, I think the first one, just to address that quickly, uh, is a really great point, and I think it would be respectfully, I would recommend perhaps a workshop session next year after we have our systemic continuous improvement project up and running in a little more organized fashion. It would be, I think, interesting for the board to hear a presentation about exactly how we are planning to use data in a more meaningful way in schools and at central office to determine how our students are doing, so, well taken.
Thank you.
Mr. Hernandez, you still, no, Ms. Oliver?
Hi, good evening, um, I wanna go back to the numbers. I, this um, in general, like I don't have an issue with the contract, we know Power Schools is what's utilized across the country. A lot of school districts use Power Schools, let's go to the numbers. So it's two-eighty-three, five-oh-seven, but when you go to the content over, uh, context in the overview, it pulls out that the base cost is one-thirty-two, three-eighty-two, which is a difference of one-fifty-one, one-twenty-seven. But you mentioned, well, there was a fifteen thousand dollar cost, I don't know if that was just only the PD or also the implementation costs, I'm trying to better understand those numbers. Also, um, as part of your savings, and I appreciate the explanation there, uh, which is great news, but it says it comes from special funds. If I follow the budget under Office of Academics and I go to other professional tech services, MHIS, which it may not be that line, so let's clarify, but even if it's not, I only am seeing a savings of forty-seven thousand dollars and one-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars. So I'm trying to understand, we're hearing that we're gonna get some savings, uh, you spoke about a couple of different contracts, year one, we didn't exactly get a bottom-line number, and then year two, we're saying there was like a hundred and forty thousand. When I go to the budget, I'm not seeing these numbers. So I'm just better, I would like to better understand how you expect that we're gonna realize those savings. Are there any real savings in year one as we're building up implementation, maybe that's what it is, or, I don't know?
So are you looking at the actual budget book?
I'm looking at the budget book under Office for Academics. It says here the funding source is special funds, that go to special funds. Um, I tried to follow this along, and I see that on other professional technical services, and I tried to find where this would be, these are only the big lines, that or communications. Um, on the professional technical services, it's a savings of forty-seven thousand dollars. On the communications line, it's um going the opposite way of three-hundred-and-ten thousand dollars. When I looked at some backup materials, uh, that finance provided us, I didn't see a part of communications, so that's fine, that's not my question. I'm just trying to better understand how we're connecting all these numbers, because again, I think it's fantastic, saving a hundred and forty thousand, but I'm not seeing it realized through the budget.
So what I would recommend, if it's, uh, if it suits the board, is that I can certainly uh cross-check this with our budget book and provide a detailed explanation in writing to the board about exactly where the savings are realized and make it more explicit.
Yeah, that, that would be helpful, thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
My, my other que- uh, my other question is in regards to, we have some other big data systems, uh, and some of our schools, I'm thinking in particular City Connects. Um, as we continue to have these portals and try and look at our students holistically, what is the system's ability to, I don't know, integrate, talk to each other? Has there any, been any thought on that?
Um, the stance on our Power School system is it is a record of authority for all information regarding students for our district, so it would be the feeder system for anything else. Um, for example, it currently feeds our iReady system, our Lexia system, our NWA map system. So it talks out, it doesn't just necessarily ingest data.
Okay.
Um, so I would imagine that there could, i- if the City Connects system allowed Power School to provide or take information in, um, it, it could work. I'm, I'm not currently aware of if it, is it feeding? We don't know, we don't know if it's currently feeding City Connects, however, if City Connects allowed that, it does have the ability to export data to populate other systems.
I'm just thinking about as we look at young people holistically, and I know there was some, I think, questions about privacy concerns and things like that, but it just, we have another big system for social-emotional, and I just, I would love to see us talk a little bit more how those systems interact, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Taylor.
So I think that what Ms. Oliver was trying to get at was, there was a document that was sent to us that really like gave the breakdown. Um, it was circulated amongst the leadership team, it wasn't circulated to the board widely, but like really like talking about like that base number. I didn't quite get my question answered, but I didn't kinda push it because I have it here on my phone, so I was like, okay Karen, just look at it. But there's a Power School financial information that was given, and it talks about the student system fee, gives a cost for the budget at year twenty-sixteen, twenty-seventeen, then twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen, and then it's like giving us like in this last column for twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen, um, like where there are savings and where there are additional costs. Do you all happen to have that document, maybe to kind? I assumed that everybody on the board had seen that, so if that's not the case. No, they haven't, it was, it was circulated amongst the leadership team, so that's. So maybe Santiago could distribute that tomorrow to the rest of the board, if it's okay with the board chair and the superintendent, so that everybody has that. Yeah, but is it possible for you all to just like maybe talk through it quickly now? And like really just give us like the bottom line, like twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen, here is really what it's gonna cost us in addition to what we currently spend?
Did you want me to go line by line on it, about what?
Whatever works best for you, and, and in the most like layman's way possible, so that we can understand and our audience.
Yep, got it. So this current school year, the twenty-sixteen-seventeen school year, we budgeted a hundred and twenty-four, you know, approximately a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for our student information system. That was just enrollment, attendance, behavior, and grades. That cost has increased slightly due to the um Power School increasing some of their costs approximately three percent inflation rate, I guess you could say. So the, that amount goes from a hundred and twenty-four thousand to a hundred and thirty-two thousand, approximately. The new part of the system that we're adding on, the base cost of that for assessment analytics and content, is a hundred and thirty-six thousand for the system license, and then a one-time cost for implementation and professional learning of approximately fifteen thousand dollars. The Sun Guard contract for Performance Plus is going away, so that previously had been budgeted for the school year of a hundred and eighteen thousand, and that will be discontinued, so that will be uh not pursued next year. Um, that contract goes through September, so we will be able to obtain a credit on that contract to be applied to our Power School contract of twelve thousand, and the purpose behind that is because Power School purchased Sun Guard Performance Plus, that system, they purchased it. So it, and then they discontinued the product. And then the map student licenses, this year, the budgeted amount for map licenses was a hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars, and next year, we're pro- proposing to um use map at a hundred and forty-one thousand dollars, if, if we need it, that's.
But what was previously budgeted was one hundred and ninety-three thousand?
This year, we expended a hundred and ninety-three thousand on map.
So we expect to be?
Fifty-one thousand dollars less.
Less, okay, that's what we.
Fifty-two thousand dollars.
You wanna know that?
Yeah, give or, yeah.
That's what we wanna know.
Yep.
I just, I've got one more question, where's the twenty-two thousand dollar save? The fifty-five, the fifty-one versus the twenty-two thousand? Where's?
So we have, because the Power School Assessment Analytics and Content costs a bit more than the power, the Sun Guard contract, there is a difference there between a hundred and eighteen and the hundred and thirty-six. There's a slight difference there, and then we have the one-time system startup fees, so that's.
Fifteen.
That difference, so if we minus that from the fifty-two thousand dollar savings, that's the balance.
Any other questions?
It's time to go home.
Yeah, so I'll just, uh, any comments? Any comments? I'll just keep my comments short. Um, Power School is only as good as the programmer, correct? So it's only as good as the actual person putting in the content information. So that would be my biggest knock against Power School. Um, so, other than that, um, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
All right, eyes have it? Thank you, thank you.
Yep.
Um, item number four, oh, I almost skipped it. Item number, well, number three? Item number three, approval of program enhancement project, PEP grant, forty thousand dollars. The Hartford Public Schools Adult Education Center has submitted a proposal to Connecticut State Department of Education, uh, capturing the Vocations Exploration Institute to receive a federal program enhancement project grant in the amount of forty thousand dollars. This propo- uh, this grant proposal requires an approval for the Board of Education. The recommendation action, the recommended action of the Hartford Board of Education authorized the superintendent to accept the program enhancement project grant in the amount of forty thousand dollars. Do I have a motion? And some move, could, do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, it's been moved and seconded, Dr. Rodriguez.
So this grant's gonna fund the Vocations Explorations Institute, um, where interested adult students will rotate through class sessions featuring basic instruction in plumbing, uh, heating of HVAC, electricity, and carpentry, while also receiving work skills training and participating in contextualized math and language arts classes leading to high school credentials. I would ask that, um, Dr. Jeter and Mr. Nicholson, um, from Adult Education, uh, join us for any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Um, any, any questions at this time? All right, well, oh, okay. Ms. Oliver?
So, uh, so, uh, uh, thank you, it's nice to see both of you. Hello, I haven't seen you in a while.
Good to see you, Ken.
Um, so first of all, you're here, that's gonna be contextualized, obviously that's fantastic. What level contextual, uh, contextualization are you expecting? Are you expecting full integrated, are you thinking concurrent? Like what are you expecting actually in the classroom?
Well, the way we have it structured is the academic instructors would be doing two days a week with the students towards their GED. And the, the other two days a week would be the vocational instructors, but the academic instructors will be present during the vocational instruction so that they see firsthand what's being taught, so that they can integrate that with the academic instruction. So essentially, the academic instructors will be present four days a week.
Okay. Okay, that's great. Um, how are you, a- again, sounds great, I love workforce development stuff, so this is awesome. So, uh, what are, what are your plans in terms of connecting, uh, these, uh, students who are successful to placements, uh, in the actual industry, et cetera?
Well, we're partnering with the Prince Tech Adult Education Division. Uh, we're also partnering with Catholic Charities, uh, and the Center of Urban Research, Education, and Training in the north end of Hartford. Uh, so there is a natural pat- as a matter of fact, the Prince Tech instructors will be, who teach in the adult division in the evenings, will be the instructors doing the HVAC and the electricity and the plumbing for this Explorations Institute. So that, uh, as the students complete the training in the Explorations Institute and earn their high school credential, there then, there's like a direct pathway to Prince Tech in terms of enrolling in their extension classes, lead also, after finishing extension classes, enrolling in their apprenticeship classes.
Um, thank you, I just, as much many, you know, partnerships you can make, whether it's with, uh, our unions or with our Workforce Development Board, to make sure that people actually get place and jobs, so.
Yes, and we actually are partnering with Capital Workforce Partners as well, the American Job Center, uh, to provide work skills training to these students, so they're involved.
Great, thank you.
Any other question? Um, I just reserve, I think maybe two. Um, and I guess just to piggyback on Ms. Oliver, um, what we're hearing, or what, what I'm hearing is a bold initiative, and I'm curious, it sounds old, it sounds good, I'm not, not saying it's not. I'm just worried that it's a lot for forty thousand dollars, so I'm kinda wondering about the sustainability. Um, after you run out of forty thousand dollars, which will probably take about five minutes.
Well, the forty thousand dollars actually will pay for the academic instructors, will pay for the vocational instructors, uh, will pay for the equipment and tools that will be used by the vocational instructors in the HVAC, plumbing, and electricity, uh, instruction. Now, keep in mind that this, we're not training these students to become licensed plumbers or licensed electricians. Uh, we're providing basic fundamental, uh, introduction to the skill so that they can see whether or not they have an interest in this particular area. When, when students go to Prince Tech, usually the first year, they're, they're going to different trade areas to see whether or not, uh, they have an interest in a particular area, and then they advance after the first year into the trade of their interest. So this kind of duplicates that in terms of this is like a basic fundamental introduction. So maybe that's a long way of saying that the tools and equipment don't cost as much as you may think.
Okay, um.
Can I add? I think I can play that. That's very noisy. Um, the other thing is with the adult ed instructors, we could assume that, uh, within our regular budget. So if after, and typically, these pet grants, the last round that they did, went on for five years, because it's very, very labor-intensive for the State Department to review these every year. So it's very, very, it's highly likely that this would be a multi-year grant. So that is good news, just because it's so labor-intensive for them to get readers and to request the proposals and to hold the bidders conference and all of those things, that the last one went on for five years. So I anticipate that this would, if we receive it, if we're selected, we would have it for multi-years.
Okay, um, and then I guess my second question is, it appears that you are, again, reducing your, um, staffing levels or your status, FTE, is that the, Paul is right here? Um, I'm trying to get into the budget lingo. But, um, I guess my question is, it seems that if you are reducing, um, the hours and trying to be more efficient with your instruction, this is, in my opinion, a very good, um, this is something that we need. And so I guess I'm wondering why we're not talking about expanding this? Or, or building on it instead of, of, of just?
Well, we will be very happy to expand it, but this is like a pilot, to see whether or not we have sufficient interest in the population, student population, to make this go.
Okay.
We are very hopeful, and I hope that you're right, you know, that this will be expanded.
Okay, all right, no, I'm, no other questions for me? Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, uh, and then item number four, first reading suicide intervention policy. The recommendation action of the Hartford Board of Education accepts the first reading of the suicide intervention, um, and intervention policy. Ms. Taylor, would you please speak to the policy? I know, I just read that, but yeah.
Yes, so the policy committee has tons of work to do. Um, this is one of the things that we are really trying to be proactive. Um, the policy committee itself has really a working plan to be proactive in response to the OCA report, not just to like meet the baseline requirements or recommendations, but really to exceed that and to think about the way that the district is moving forward and how we work together, um, using our policies really as the driver for that. I am gonna call up, um, Intellectual Superstar and Executive Director of Policy and Innovation, Michelle Pulick, in case there are questions, 'cause I don't wanna. in case there are questions, because I don't want to miss anything here. Um, I'm going to read the policy. There really are just minor changes within the policy. Like I said, um, in my report, we're really just moving from the language of the student assistant team, student assistance team to the crisis team. Um, so there really aren't any substantial changes to policy. There was one thing that I did catch within regulations. If you look under management of suicidal risk under D, this is what happens when you don't, um, review this prior to meeting. I'm just, I'm just realizing that we did talk about within committee that we wanted to make sure that item D applies to any student enrolled under the age of 21, but we're still really in discussions about that because we talked about adult ed as well. It's not reflected here, but it is something that we have documented and we will change, um, within regulations. But that's not what we're voting on this evening. We're voting on policy. I will read briefly. So students, suicide prevention and intervention. The Hartford Board of Education recognizes that suicide is a complex issue and that schools are not meant to help treatment centers. School personnel may recognize a potentially suicidal youth and in such cases may make a preliminary determination of level of risk. The board directs the school staff to refer students who come to their attention as being at risk of attempting suicide for professional assessment and treatment services outside of the school. The board recognizes the need for youth suicide prevention procedures and will establish programs to assist staff to identify risk factors, intervention procedures, and procedures for referral to outside services. Training will be provided for teachers and other school staff and students to provide awareness and assistance in this area. Any board employee who has knowledge of a suicidal threat, attempt of ideation, must immediately report this information to the building principal or his or her designee, who may activate the crisis team, a component of emergency response team. The crisis team with administrative assistance, if necessary, will contact the student's family and appropriate resources outside and within the school system. Information concerning a student's suicide attempt, threat or risk will be shared with others to the degree necessary to protect that student and others. And Michelle, if I've left anything out in terms of like why we're here this evening and addressing this, feel free to jump in at any point.
Now, tonight is just a first read on this policy. It's not a vote, actually. So we wanted to bring it to you so that it's accepted for first read. Then you have, you know, the next month to, to review it and we can have some public comment on it. I've also invited Joanne Jackson to come to the next Board of Education meeting to speak about the content and then the regulations as well. She is the person in our district who is really the point person on the regulations related to this policy. So I wanted to make sure you had that, uh, information.
All right, okay. Is that, uh, it's, so we don't need any, um, vote for that item?
We don't vote to accept it?
Right.
The first read?
Um, no, there's no vote. There's no vote. Um, I do agree that you are Intellectual Superstar. You give me some good advice. So thank you, um, for that. All right. So the chair will move to take up the consent agenda. Item is one item. Uh, do I have a second for that?
Second.
Second, uh, and I've moved, um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, so eyes have it. So we just did the consent agenda and now we have, um, crap. So now we gotta go to executive session. Not my favorite.
I'm sorry, I'm just being, I'm being.
Sure. No, no.
Moved to take up this consent agenda as one item. We still have to vote on it.
I thought we voted on it.
No.
Okay, so we voted on the, all right.
I voted on taking it up as one item.
I'm thinking about, I'm thinking about home, sorry. All right, all in favor of, of accepting it? Thank you, um, Ms. Glanville. Um, all in favor of accepting the, uh, consent agenda? Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, Ms. Glanville. Eyes have it. Appreciate it. Okay, um, and do we have a motion to go into executive session?
Still moved?
Uh, still moved and seconded. Um, all in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Any against? Uh, we are now going to executive session, uh, and we will take with us the superintendent and attorney while.